Shall we bow our heads? Most gracious heavenly Father, we're thankful for the day you've given us the sunshine we've enjoyed. Father, we're thankful for giving us the safety through yesterday, through the rain, and the ability we have to be here tonight. Father, we ask that you be with us as we make decisions for this county, that they be the proper things, the right things that we need to do to look after the citizens of this great county. Father, we ask that you be with those that are dealing with this pandemic that we have, those that have been ill, the commissioners that we have that have been dealing with this also. We ask that you guide them, that you be with the caregivers that are with them and look after them also. Father, we're so thankful for the many blessings we have, but may we always remember those blessings come from you. We offer this prayer in your son's holy name. Amen. Will you join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Charlotte P.
Here.
Craig Lynch. David Jones.
Here.
Jim Aberwater.
Here.
Lee Vogel. Marvin Whitworth. Mike Kush.
Present.
Pettis Reed.
Here.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Here.
Thank you, Gail. This meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission is being conducted electronically pursuant to Governor Bill Lee's Executive Order 16. I would ask for a motion that conducting this meeting electronically is necessary to protect public health, safety, and welfare in light of the coronavirus. Have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please, Gail.
Charlotte P. Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch. David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Aberwater.
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth. Mike Kush.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Gail. This time, we need to approve the minutes for our March 23, 2020 meeting. Call on our Vice Chair Pettis Reed.
Mr. Chairman, I have read over these minutes, I have found nothing to be out of order or incorrect. I so move that they be approved.
We have a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on the minutes? Call the roll, please, Gail.
Charlotte P. Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch. David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Aberwater.
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth. Mike Kush.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. We have no items withdrawn or deferred, and we have 1, 2, 3, 4 rezoning requests tonight, so we'll get right at it. And let me go ahead and tell everyone, and I might forget a little bit later on, but all of these rezoning requests are being heard before the Planning Commission tonight and after tonight. They will go before the Rutherford County Commission on October the 15, 6:30 PM in this room. Once again, that's County Commission, October 15, 2020. Item 6A, these are rezoning requests, 6AA. The item number is REZ 20-019 Porfirio Alfaro. The location is 6239 Burnt Knob Road. Commission District is 20. The County Commissioner is Trey Gooch. Size of the site is approximately 2 acres. Tax map is 77. Existing zoning is RM residential medium density, and proposed zoning is OP for office professional.
Yes, sir. Thank you, and good evening, Commissioners. Hope everybody's doing well tonight. This application actually is for a piece of property that was considered by the Planning Commission and Board of Commissioners back in 2018. The original request came as a result of a zoning enforcement action. The applicant was proposing to run his concrete business from the property, which at the time was already in operation. Again, after discussion, the application was recommended for denial by the Planning Commission, and then ultimately was denied by the Board of Commissioners back in April of 2018. Following these meetings, the applicant did resolve the zoning enforcement issues that led to the request. The applicant came into the office a few weeks back, I guess about a month or so ago, and relayed to staff that, no, he's renting the property and has having difficulty renting it to as a house, as a residential unit, thinks it would be better if it were zoned for a different occupancy. So he's now proposing to zone the property office professional, OP, as opposed to commercial services, which he did back in 2018, in order to operate an office and then maybe some mini warehouse facilities. Mini warehouses are allowed by special exception by the Board of Zoning Appeals in the OP District. Offices, of course, would be allowed by right. He did submit a concept plan, which is within your agenda materials and on your iPads. The existing house does have access to Burnt Knob Road. Should this access be, I'm sorry, should this application be approved? They would have to do an engineered site plan showing that the existing drive and parking areas could be brought up to county standards. Same with landscaping, they would be required to put a landscape buffer. OP only requires a type 1 buffer adjacent to residentially zoned property as opposed to commercial, which would require a type 2 buffer. And then our performance standards would also apply to this particular application. The area surrounding, immediately surrounding this property really hasn't changed much since the last application when his rezoning for CS was made. The range of uses in the OP District is less than what you would see in the CS, but staff still at that, still doesn't think that it would be inappropriate to, it would be appropriate to rezone this property. When the applicant did come into our office and we talked, I talked with him about it, I did tell him at the time that I didn't think that this would be an appropriate rezoning, but he still, it's his right to do, so he went ahead and still made application. So our recommendation is still for denial on this. So with that, I do believe I saw him on the Zoom call. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Doug, any questions for staff at this time? Neighbors?
Seems like I got a phone call or two about this, not many. And the one, seems like the one person that did, that do remember calling specifically didn't think it was a good idea to zone the property, but didn't get a whole lot of phone calls beyond that.
Other questions at this time? I see Mr. Alfaro has signed up, and he's probably on Zoom. Would the applicant like to say a few words or make a presentation of some sort? Mr. Alfaro, are you there? We can't hear you. Are you muted?
Still can't hear me. We can see you talking, but we can't hear anything.
Still can't hear you. Usually, there's a mute button down in the left-hand corner of your screen. Have you pushed that button?
If there's a microphone setting, sometimes a microphone will be muted out under your sound settings. You might want to look at that, because you're not muted. We can tell you're not muted here. Got you.
Okay. Well, my name is Porfirio Alfaro, and I own the property on 6239 Burnt Knob Road. The reason that I am trying to rezone that property is really just to have a use for the house. We had, we had bid it for rent, and I had a company that tried to bid it for rent for us, and they had some trouble. I guess a lot of the families that went by and looked at the house and tried to rent it, they were concerned about a lot of the trucks that were running down through there. They say it looked more like a commercial, like a commercial site. So I wait a couple of years before, you know, before I decide to do anything. We had this house since, we built it three years ago, so it's pretty new. But because when I started with the house, we, I used to run my own business, a concrete business out of there, so that was, so when we designed the property, it was pretty much designed for that, because we thought, since we were on the county, we thought it was a good, a good place to have my own personal business, a small business, which, you know, later it grew, and I guess it was, it was just a small place, and it was too many things after, to keep on that property. So for this time, I mean, what I'd like to do is if it was possible for us to rezone it and use it as a, pretty much like an office, or something that it doesn't require so much, that it doesn't have so much traffic, something, I just want to be able to use the property, because we really like this property, but I really don't want to get rid of it. And I feel like this is a really good place to have some offices. I already had some people, they asked me, some CPAs that they were interested on doing it, but you know, I just want to do the right thing and do, and do it right, but that's why I'm asking for what it will be a good thing to do. So that is all I have to say.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Alfaro? Thank you. We have no one else signed up to speak on this rezoning request, but is there anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request? Guess I need to open up the public hearing first, right? My bad. At this point, I will open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, REZ 20-019? Seeing or hearing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Doug, the surrounding area is exclusively residential?
Right around where the property is, it's zoned pretty much RM, yes. Now, I do believe in the comments I had written that right next door to the west, there is, it's zoned RM, but there's a church on the property. On going to the east, you do have the Rogers Group Quarry, and then you do have property located directly across the street that was rezoned a year or two ago for Eddie Queen, which was, if you recall, going to be like a mulch facility, land moving type thing, you know, that kind of thing. But as far as that general, right where that property is located, it's pretty, it's all RM.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes. Commissioner Allen.
Thank you. Doug or Mike, can you show, you have the map that shows us the surrounding properties and how they're all zoned? I'm just trying to understand, get a point of reference for where some of these other businesses are located.
Ma'am.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is it? Oh, yeah, it's on the screen right now. Is it coming through over there where you are around it?
Please change, please.
Those two on the north side, excuse me, those two on the, I forgot about those two. Those are, that's Stuart Conway's property, the mini warehouse facility that went through the Planning Commission last month, right next to the quarry.
And then Rogers Group right behind it.
Which is still residentially zoned, just nonconforming.
Entrance to, are the entrance and exit ramps to 840 is to the east of that, correct?
Correct. Yeah, it's a little way down the road. It's not right there. It's a little far down there, probably a mile or two, roughly.
Mike, I just now was able to pull that up on the screen. Can you put that map back up and show me the subject property compared to these others?
You've got it up. Yeah. Yeah.
There's just a little bit of a delay for it coming up.
I got it.
So the subject property is in yellow, and then, like Doug said, the mulching mower was the light industrial farther to the east, and Stuart Conway on the north side of Burnt Knob, and Rogers Group Quarry north of that.
Okay, yeah, you just, we had named several, and so I just was trying to place where they were in comparison to this property, and there still is a pretty good distance from those, so thank you. That's why I needed to see.
Any other questions? Storage buildings, that's what, storage buildings?
That was one of the proposed uses he talked about. Now, of course, it's not a planned development, so, you know, we can't hold him to that. If he wanted to do that, he would have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for that, because that's only allowed by special exception in the OP District. It falls under general personal services.
So he could take this to the BZA?
If he got it approved, yes, sir, he could.
And your recommendation to denial is because houses, because it's church?
Well, I think my recommendation was just, it kind of goes back to the whole timing aspect of things. You know, there are, like I said, directly to the west is a church. The surrounding area right around it's still residential and becomes more residential as you go to the west. When you start going to the east, there are just a, well, there are a handful maybe of houses. Now, you do have a couple of industrially zoned properties and the quarry, but beyond those couple rezonings, nothing really has changed out there. It's pretty much the same as it was two years ago. So, I mean, that's, that was kind of my thoughts on it.
Okay, where we had last month about the storage buildings?
The what now? Say again?
The storage buildings that we talked about last month. They just up the road?
Yes, they're at Michael's, those.
They're closer to the 840. I mean, if this property was closer to the exchange, I used to go, or I go through this frequently, and I agree, it's very residential in that particular, well, past the quarry. You know, if this spot was closer to the 840, I would, it would be a little more questionable whether to make it a business, but this is not close to 840, and it's past the quarry, and it's all houses at that point.
But you think, so you think it's out in too much residential, right?
Charlotte, can you use your mic?
Here is a street view from across the street. There's some houses across the street.
Something about truck traffic, yes, there is a lot of truck traffic, but it's from the quarry to 840, and this is past that. So this is west of the quarry, and...
So it's quite a neighborhood.
Well, except for the trucks, once you get to the quarry. Chairman, due to the location and the RM development or zoning around it, I think it's premature, and upon staff's recommendation, I make a motion to deny.
Have a motion to deny is our second. Have a motion and a second to deny. Mr. Aberwater did, but you couldn't hear him. We have a motion and a second to deny REZ 20-019 for Mr. Alfaro. Any other questions or comments? Once again, the motion is to deny. Call the roll, please, Gail.
Charlotte P. Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch. David Jones. David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Aberwater.
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth. Mike Kush.
No.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion is to deny. And once again, this is scheduled to be heard before the full County Commission on October 15. Item 6AB REZ 20-020, Michael Hazlitt and Zane, Zan, Zane. Location is 6711 Old Nashville Highway. Commission District is 19. The County Commissioner is Rod Key. The size of the site is approximately 5 acres. Tax map is 57. The existing zoning is RM residential medium density. Proposed zoning is CS for commercial services. Doug?
Yes, sir, thank you. The applicant's proposing to zone the subject property commercial services in order to develop a mixture of commercial uses, including a convenience store, general retail, restaurants, office, medical offices, and/or a walk-in clinic. Now, that information that I received right there, that you've written on there, is right from their application. Since this is not a planned development, however, the zoning ordinance would dictate which uses would be allowed on a property should this be approved. The applicant has included a concept plan, which I did include with your agenda packets. It is on your iPad. The plan shows three potential lots with one building on each lot for a total of approximately 22,000 square feet of building area. When you look on that, you do see parking areas, potential areas for septic soils, but you don't really see any stormwater management areas being identified. So just again, this is not a binding plan by any means. You know, if this were to be approved, they would have to come back through, and they would have to demonstrate adequate drainage on these lots. But I just wanted to at least point that out to you, that what they're showing there may be kind of a best world situation, because there are no facilities for stormwater management. This property currently has driveway access onto Old Nashville Highway. The applicant's concept plan does show two access points, one on Old Nashville Highway and one on Florence Road. Staff would anticipate requesting traffic studies should this application be approved when the uses are more known than they are right now. Of course, this engineered site plan, as you would expect, would be required to be submitted and reviewed by staff before any development would be constructed on this property, and they would have to be built to county standards. Landscaping would have to be a type 2 buffer adjacent to any residentially zoned properties. In addition, any outdoor storage areas would also have to be appropriately screened, and a landscape plan would be required as well, and the performance standards would apply to this. I put some additional information in your packets regarding the traffic counts. This was kind of, right, there wasn't a traffic count just right on where it was located, but there were some in the general vicinity. You'll notice a little table on the page 2 of 4 of the staff report, kind of showing you some traffic counts, as well as I annotated the map as to which station was which, so you had an idea as to what you were looking at there. The location of this property does lend itself to nonresidential development. It's at a signalized intersection, and there are other nonresidential uses within about 700 feet of the property. And this site is also within the general urban area, according to the county's comprehensive plan, which does contemplate those kind of uses. However, that being said, there is always a timing element to zoning requests, as we just talked about with the last application. We do have concerns about potential impacts to traffic along Florence Road, Old Nashville Highway, and also drainage concerns. Again, that property and this concept plan not showing much of any stormwater detention or retention areas. So staff didn't make really a recommendation one way or the other on this particular application, just because we can see both sides of this. I will say that we did receive several phone calls on this. There are several people who are signed up to speak tonight, and you'll be hearing from them. I know that I also talked to a few people that actually didn't have a problem with the zoning request. So again, it's kind of, kind of, kind of ran the gamut of opinions on this. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for staff at this time? If not, the applicant and the applicant's representative, Mr. Taylor and Mr. Hazlitt are both, I believe, signed up and should be on Zoom. Would one of you guys like to make a statement or comment?
This is Matt Taylor from SEC. I'll be happy to speak on my client's behalf. I think that we fully understand and are, and have no objection to the traffic study requirement at a site plan stage. We fully anticipated that anyway, so that is absolutely not a problem. And stormwater, we understand, you know, we've left some gaps on the concept plan to start with, but we understand that we'll have to comply with all the stormwater when we get to a detailed engineering plan. So we know there's a drainage path through our property we'll have to respect. There's some storm drainage underneath Old Nashville Highway that continues on toward the north, so we do not have an issue with any of those, and feel like we can address those with an engineered site plan more than a concept plan. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. My client's always is on the call as well.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Taylor? Thank you, Matt. Stay close, just in case, okay? This time, I'll declare the public hearing open for item number REZ 20-020 for Michael Hazlitt. We have several people signed up to speak, and I'll just kind of go down the list to see if they're with us tonight. Mr. McGinnis, Kevin McGinnis, are you with us? Mr. McGinnis? Mrs. Bale, Betty Bale?
Present.
Would you care to make some comments, please?
Yes. Matter of fact, I am really against this, because there has already been increased traffic in this area. We have three convenience stores with gas pumps very close to this corner lot that you're talking about, and I'd like to see it stay residential, because, you know, when I purchased this at auction in 93, I had no thought in my life that there would ever be anything like that in this area. And it just really bothers me that someone can come in and do this instead of going further out into, what you say, an area where there's not so much residential and trying to start something there. That's my opposition, and I thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mrs. Bale. We appreciate you taking your time to share with us. Mrs. Lance, Wanda Lance, are you with us? Mr. Sandy Elkins, are you with us? Shannon North? Hi. Shannon North?
My name is Wanda Lance. Hello?
I'm, I'm sorry. I'm having a difficult time figuring out who's who. Uh, is this Miss?
Well, I know Shannon, Shannon is on and, and Wanda Lance is on. I couldn't get my phone unmuted.
Okay. Who's, who am I speaking with right now?
Wanda Lance.
Wanda Lance. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Lance. I didn't mean to skip over you. You have some comments?
Yes, I do, and my apologies for not joining sooner. I just couldn't get the mute on. Um, well, first of all, we bought our home here in nineteen ninety-eight and we've come up against a, uh, convenience store gas pump wanting to be built next door to us. We are pretty much catty cornered to property at sixty-seven eleven Old Nashville. And we have within a two-and-a-half mile radius, as Ms. Bale was saying, we have, within a two-and-a-half mile radius on Florence Road, we already have two, excuse me, three gas stations with convenience stores. In the eighteen-mile section on, on, on Old Nashville Highway, we have four convenience stores with gas pumps and that's in an eighteen-mile section. Uh, currently in our area, in our community, we have mostly residential. We have a lot of farm. We have a lot of agriculture. And the only commercial that we have are two churches that are less than five hundred feet from this particular home. At the same time, we have some commercial, but they're duplexes, which house residential as well. So I'm a little concerned because this home was purchased on the thirty-first of July. Mr. Hazlett is not a resident of our area. He hasn't lived there. He doesn't understand that, you know, we purchased our homes years ago so that we have what this has to offer. We are already faced right now just with the widening of the road just a few years back on Old Nashville. We've gone from, you know, four cars at each, uh, intersection point at the traffic light to now more than ten to fifteen cars starting at four o'clock lasting to seven. You know, I think that perhaps there's a sign at the intersection that says, you know, gentlemen, start your engines because we have cars that drive fifty miles an hour down, down through Old Nashville Highway. We have no lighting. There are absolutely no street lighting. Our road, Old Nashville, if this area is county, Florence is city. We have no sidewalks. We have a substandard road. We have an accident at least once every ten days. Of course, that's been reduced because used to it was every seven days until we got our traffic light in. And so I'm really concerned about the fact that we're going to add additional traffic to an area that really doesn't need it because we already have the quarry trucks from the quarry just down the road. We have all, every landscaping maintenance company that has, uh, trees and limbs to drop off, plus individual residents that are going to the mulch center off of Florence Road. And I just don't feel like it's conducive to what we need at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Lance. We appreciate you calling in. Uh, was Shannon North?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay, I have a, thank you. I have a letter that I'd like to read to you.
Sure.
And I would just like, I'd like to start off by saying that I echo Ms. Bale and Ms. Lance's comments. Um, and just a little history about us. So my husband, daughter, and I were all born and raised in Rutherford County. We have spent our lives in this beautiful countryside. For the past seventeen years, we've resided neighboring the property of sixty-seven eleven Old Nashville Highway. We've enjoyed having the Tin Penny and Hale family as neighbors and we've built a strong community and shared responsibility. We've improved the aesthetics of the land and we work together to keep it beautiful. We stood, as Wanda Lance had said, united fourteen years ago when a previous commercial zoning request was ahead of us and we persevered with a successful outcome. We were able to protect our way of life, our harmony, and our peace. We chose to live in the country for the quiet peace and star-studded night sky. We raised our family here. Our child was brought home from Murphy's World Medical Hospital, from the hospital to this house and we are building our American dream, turning this house into our home. We are here, as Wanda said, we live here. We urge you to empathize with the values and the way of life rooted in our community. We value our church neighbors and our quiet, starry nights. Combined, our family has ninety-two years of residency in Rutherford County. As I mentioned before, seventeen of those years have been at this address. My child knows no other address. And we have no intention to move from our forever home. The possibility of commercial zoning brings with it many challenges. Some of those have been addressed by our neighbors, including the runoff, noise, a dangerous intersection, and traffic congestion. Not only are we concerned with the impact that obvious changes the development of the land will generate, we are also concerned with pollution. Pollution of light, off gases from building materials, vehicle exhaust, added traffic to commercial business, the pollution from those vehicles going to the business, pollution from runoff, noise, pollution, and of course, waste. Commercial businesses generate a great deal of waste from its products and its customers. Green spaces are replaced with parking lots and those parking lots shed rainwater that will flood our adjacent properties. Our beautiful community is in danger of losing its peace and the peace is so cherished by its members. In regards to what we've heard of plans for a gas station, this specific type of development brings further concerns. The propensity of crime is top of mind to the objection of a gas station. The property is a residential property with residents as neighbors. Today, we enjoy looking after and helping one another. A gas station would destroy the very community that has been built and it puts its, its residents in danger. A gas station would also destroy the sense of peace we chose to live out our lives in this part of the county. Rather than a neighbor getting a few visitors over the weekend, a gas station would draw thousands of vehicles per day pumping thousands of gallons of gasoline. The pollution compounds with post-consumer trash, exhaust fumes, and commercial lighting that never turns off. I implore you to consider the three nearby gas stations and the local Dollar General as proof the community is being served with its fuel and convenience needs and understand our strong objection to another such business. I appreciate all of your time.
Thank you, Ms. North. Nikki Di Tomasi? Let me go back and ask one more time. Kevin McGinnis? Sandy Elkins? Nikki Di Tomasi?
Uh, that, that would be me, sir.
I probably said that wrong, didn't I? Uh, go ahead and make your comments, please. Go ahead and make your comments, please.
Okay, yes, I am, uh, I'm directly across the street at, uh, sixty-six twenty-seven Old Nashville Highway. Uh, the, the cat, my house actually caddies the, um, the adjacent property. And my neighbors have, uh, fully similar concerns that I might have, especially with a, uh, a gas station and the, the entrance being, um, on Florence Road itself. They're, uh, it's already quite dangerous. I, people will get over about three hundred to four hundred feet before the actual light and makes it dangerous to me just trying to turn into my driveway at, uh, most points during the day because it's quite busy already. Um, especially if there is going to be such a gas station or, or, or anything like that because my, my house already gets riddled with the light from the, from the street lights all night and any more light pollution would just, uh, make it even more difficult to keep light out of the house while I'm trying to sleep at night. But everything else, I believe, has been addressed as far as my concerns by my neighbors already and I, uh, I appreciate the time I got to speak this afternoon.
Thank you. We appreciate you calling in and giving your input. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request? Seeing or hearing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This is David. Um, Doug, in this area, it Florence Road annexed into the city?
There are not right here. Uh, if, uh, Mike can turn on the, the city limits. There's city limits not far from it along Florence Road on, honestly, on either side. But, uh, you know, Mike's gonna pull up the, the zone.
Sorry, my computer's acting funny, but Florence Road was reconstructed by the city.
Right.
And I believe it's still in the county, but they maintain it.
Yeah, this portion is still in the county right through here.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Okay. Second?
The spot there at the bottom, it looks kind of pained to me.
Yeah, that's, uh, that area right toward the bottom of the screen, that is in the city limits. That's a, a city subdivision.
And then the Nissan parts warehouse is also in the city.
At that.
Looking for a motion?
Well, I like reading here. Staff's recommendation, the site is also within the general urban character area according to the county's comprehensive plan, which contemplate non-residential uses. But there's always a timing element to rezoning requests. All, all the people around it, the best I could understand were not in favor. Is that correct?
Based on the comments I heard, I would say that's accurate. Yes, sir.
Oh, I, yeah. I don't, I don't know when to pull the trigger on, on the timing, but I'll, I'll make a motion to deny.
We have a motion to deny. And a second. A very strong second. We have a motion and a second to deny R E Z two zero dash zero two zero. And I believe if I've heard the, the reasons that, um, there are a, a timing issue and, uh, the potential impact of traffic along the highway uh, and some drainage issues at this time. Other questions or comments? Once again, we have a motion to deny. Call the roll, please, Gail.
Charlotte P. Chip Pinion?
Yes.
Craig Lynch? David Jones?
Yes.
Jim Everwater?
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth? Mike Kush?
Yes.
Pettis Reed?
Yes.
Rhonda Allen?
Yes.
Jeff Phillips?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion to deny carries. Item six A C R E Z two zero dash zero two one. This is for Sammy Brewer and, uh, D R Horton. Location is twenty-one, I'm sorry, ninety-one twenty-three Old Lebanon Road. Commission district is two. The county commissioner is Steve Piercy. The size of the site is approximately thirty-seven acres. Tax map is twenty-four. The existing zoning is R M residential medium density. Proposed zoning is for P U D, planned unit development for a residential subdivision. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. I'm sorry. I'm just flipping over. I'm just opening up the P U D pattern book so I can make some references to it as I'm talking to you all here. There we go. Okay, the applicant's proposing to zone this property planned unit development in order to develop the Griffith Cove subdivision. Now Griffith Cove will contain eighty-one residential lots for a density of about two-point-two units per acre. Uh, the minimum lot size is seven, eight hundred square feet with home sizes ranging anywhere between eighteen hundred up through twenty-seven hundred square feet and if possible, higher than that. Uh, minimum lot width would be sixty feet. Uh, these parameters are similar to what was approved for the Griffith Park development, which is immediately to the south. Mike's kind of highlighting it right there. It was originally called the Cothran Retreat, but then as they were in the, going through the development process, they asked to change the name, which was not a big issue, uh, with us. Uh, staff did ask the applicant to provide a chart comparing the two developments in the pattern book. If you look in the pattern book, again, on your iPads, on the, uh, plan page twelve, uh, you will see, uh, that that chart has been provided, kind of give you an idea of the comparisons between the two. You'll notice that there's, it's a very similar, uh, type development as, as far as that goes. Uh, all homes are for purchase. Uh, they would have a minimum of three-bedroom, two-car, front and a garage. Uh, decorative street lighting, home elevations are to be constructed of masonry materials. And again, I'll point you to the pattern book for additional information on the development. Access to the property would be through the existing stubouts into the Griffith Park development. There will not be any direct access onto Old Lebanon Road. Uh, turn lane improvements have been installed at the intersections of Lebanon Pike and Malcolm Way, which is the, uh, the one street that goes directly into the development. Mike, again, Mike's highlighting it right in, in that area. And then also at the intersection of Cut Off Road and two thirty-one Lebanon Pike. So those were made in part, as part of the approval process for the Griffith Park, uh, development. Uh, as you can see from the concept plan, um, there are two separate entrances. You've got two sides, uh, to this particular development. You've got about twenty lots on one side of the, uh, tributary and then remaining lots on the, on the other side. Uh, there's no cross-connection between those. Uh, we had some discussion internally among staff regarding that as well as with the applicant. Uh, after discussion, I think, you know, ultimately, I think we're, we're okay with the, uh, design, the way that it is shown on there. Uh, buffering and screening is not something you typically see between single-family developments. Uh, since this is a P U D application, they are required to provide a minimum of ten percent open space for the development, uh, which they have done. They're proposing over nine acres of open space. This does exceed our requirements. And the pattern book als- also states that all lots would have foundation landscaping and sodded front yards and the performance standards would not apply to this since this is a residential development. Uh, again, the development parameters on this for, uh, this particular development are, if approved, are similar to those in the Griffith Park development. Uh, traffic improvements, again, have been installed along Lebanon Pike and Cut Off Road as well as a little further up Lebanon Pike. Uh, so as far from a traffic standpoint, we don't foresee that being a, an issue. We're generally comfortable with the design and, uh, we do recommend approval of this development. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Doug. Any questions for staff? Hearing none. We've got one, two, three, four, five different representatives from the applicant and/or the applicant himself, uh, signed up. Would someone like to take the lead here?
Yeah, Matt Taylor from S E C will. Um, my clients are on the phone in case there's a question I can't answer. But, uh, I think Doug did a good job going over this. We really view this as kind of just a natural extension of Griffith Park. It's been a, um, I think it's been a successful development for my client. Uh, they are working on the infrastructure of the last section now. And so, um, this property came available and wanted to continue that to the north. So the housing will be identical to what's being built inside of Griffith Park today. And, um, I believe, uh, we're gonna add some amenities as well as be able to utilize the existing. So I will be happy to answer any questions, but, uh, I think it's well laid out in the book. No reason to go through all that.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Any questions of the applicant? Any questions of Mr. Taylor? Thank you, Matt. At this point, I'll declare the public hearing open for R E Z two zero dash zero two one. Sammy J Brewer for D R Horton. Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing or seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve?
And I'll second. This is Mike Kush.
We have a motion and a second to approve with all staff comments?
That's correct, with all staff comments.
Thank you.
That's it. That's how I heard it.
Once again, we have a motion and a second to approve R E Z two zero dash zero two one for D R Horton and Sammy Brewer. Other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Reed?
Just one question before we do vote right there. I noticed there is an existing cemetery in there. Who will maintain that cemetery?
That will, well, and, uh, Matt Taylor, correct me if I'm wrong, that'll be something that'll be the, um, I would imagine the HOA would be the ones taking care of that. But, uh, that was something actually. But that was something actually, the location of it shown on the county's GIS was a little different than what they found in the field. So we'll let our archivists know about that and make any changes that are necessary. But Matt, if that's beyond, if that's not quite your understanding, just let me know about that.
Yeah, we do anticipate that being part of, that's actually on a common space lot or open space lot on our plan. And so that'll be mowed and maintained by the HOA. We'll fence it off, similar to what we did with the cemetery in the existing Griffith Park.
Brave sites will be protected.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you. Other questions? We have a motion and a second to approve, REZ 20-021. Call the roll, please, Gail.
Charlotte P. Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch. David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Everwater.
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth. Mike Kush.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
You. 6AD, item number is 18-8005, Scott Grabey for Benchmark Companies. Location is Miller Road. Commission District is 6. County Commissioner is Joe Frank-Jernigan. Size of the site is approximately 20 acres and approximately six acres to be rezoned. Tax map is 156. Existing zoning is RM residential medium density. Proposed zoning is for PUD, planned unit development. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. This property does probably look familiar to the commissioners. It's been a little while since we've considered this, probably about a year, but I'm just going to go back and give just a little bit of background. Originally, this came to the planning commission as a result of a zoning enforcement action. Now, the applicant does own the existing business located directly to the west of the property under consideration for zoning today. Benchmark Companies did rezone the adjacent property back in 2013 with a second zoning request back in 2014 to correct some of the zoning lines and the property lines that weren't matching up. And the site plan for Benchmark was approved back in 2013. The applicant began using the subject property for mulch storage at some point after moving his business to the adjacent property. We did alert the applicant that he was in violation, instructed him to submit a zoning application. The original request was for EAC, which is similar to the surrounding area, which was considered by the planning commission back in March of 2018. The item was deferred for the applicant to pursue a planned development application. The PUD was considered by the planning commission in October 2019, but it was deferred at that time to give staff some more time to review the pattern book and for the applicant to make necessary changes that were identified. Since that time, of course, we've dealt with the whole COVID situation, which kind of, kind of threw a monkey wrench into, into everything. But what you have on your iPads and on the sharepoint for those who are at home tonight is a copy of the applicant's most recently revised pattern book, which has been included with your agenda materials as a separate attachment. The pattern book does show the property in question as well as the proposed use and proposed buffering. We did have several comments on the pattern book that were forwarded to the applicant's design consultant. Staff has looked over the changes that were made. Most of them have actually been addressed, but there were a few that weren't. We did send an updated list to the applicant's team for them to, for their consideration and inclusion into the pattern book. Some things like the legal description should just be approved. We would have to have viability of the sole site on the property, which they have actually, one of those pictures actually shows you can see a kind of a cordon-off area. They are protecting the sole site now, so we're happy to see that, as well as, you know, providing a little more detail on the buffers along Miller Road. So that's kind of where we are at this point. He's still trying to move forward. These pictures that you see on the screen right now are taken, I believe they were just taken this past Friday, all of them were. So he has made progress as far as trying to put some of the berm's up and everything around the subject property, even the existing site where he is required to do some buffering as well. We do have mixed feelings on the application. Of course, our biggest concern has always been just performance of the site. I don't think it's so much an issue that we don't think that this area is going to, you know, slowly commercialize over time. You have the existing Benchmark Companies facility on the corner. You have many warehouse facilities directly to the east of the subject property looking for zoning tonight. From a zoning standpoint, I think we're okay there. Our biggest concern's always been performance, which is why we wanted to have a planned development so we could hold some accountable to certain buffering and standards and whatnot. So with that, I know that, I saw Clyde Roundtree just a moment ago. I'm not sure if Scott Grabey's on as well. I'm sure he probably is. But with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Doug. Any questions for staff? The applicant either present or online?
I'm representing Mr. Grabey. This is Clyde Roundtree of Hudson Steel Engineering.
Okay.
And Mr. Grabey's on the other line, I believe, as well.
Okay.
I'm present as well.
Very good. Go ahead.
I'll just start off by saying, first off, thank you for the opportunity hearing our request. And I've been trying to work with Doug and Mike and trying to make sure the book was tight enough to try to reconcile the previous concerns that were stated by the commissioners. And originally, it was more of a generic site plan, and we've added a lot more detail through this process, trying to locate the actual stockpiles to identify the circulation. There has been a page added in the pattern book that related to the landscaping along Miller Road as well as Mr. Grabey would like to put more landscaping along the northern portion as well, which is where he'd like to implement a berm as well as more vegetation. As far as the soils area, he has put the Jersey barriers around that. They've been in place for a while. And one of Doug's comments was trying to bring the mulch piles in from Miller Road. And I think that although not specifically defined more than 20 feet off of Miller Road, there'll be a berm between the mulch piles and the actual, an actual berm that separates Miller Road from the actual operation. Mr. Grabey wanted to keep the circulation internal to the site, so although there'd be some mulch piles that could possibly be visible from Miller Road, he wanted to prevent a lot of activity being seen as a result of the activities going on. And there's also, for definitive purposes, we defined a storage area where equipment would be stored. It's not a covered structure. That was one of the staff's concerns. It's basically an area where he will be designated to store equipment. And he will have an operable machine on property, but it's not specifically placed because it moves around as the operation brings an inventory to be mulched. So with that in mind, I think it's a much cleaner site plan. We do want to preserve as much of the existing vegetation, both to the north and to the, to the west. Miller Road's being widened, so there's some vegetation there that's going to be taken out, but Mr. Grabey's anticipating along the area that we're now impacting with this expansion of his business to have that mulch area screened by a berm. Like I said, that's a minimum four feet wide, 10 feet, 10 feet wide, four feet high. And with that in mind, Scott would be willing to add any more detail, but, and we're willing to do whatever it takes to make sure that this stays viable. This was a result of his business growing expeditiously. And the fellow who owns the property is a, is not a relationship relative, but it's someone he's in a relationship with. So it's kind of a natural progression just to move on to this area. And so he's, he's basically creeped, his businesses have been creeping to the north on this friend's property. So this is the property we're trying to rezon. So with that in mind, I'm available for any questions you may have. And Mr. Grabey's available as well.
Very good. Thank you, Clyde. Any questions for the applicant? Not. I'll declare the public hearing open for item 18-8005, Scott Grabey, and for Benchmark Companies. Anyone wishing to speak, whether in person or online? Seeing or hearing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners. Chairman? Sir? Doug, have you had any contact from anyone out there? I made any calls from?
I have received no phone calls on this application, no, sir.
Mrs. Bale, have you?
Are you asking me if I've received any calls? I have not, not lately.
I wonder, because it seems like every time I see this, it seems like it does change, like it does improve each time I see it or whatever. But do you feel comfortable with?
I feel more comfortable than I did when this first was submitted. You know, the proof's always in the pudding, so they say. You know, it's going to be up to him if this is rezoned to, you know, put his, you know, put his best foot forward and to, you know, do what he says he's going to do. You know, that's been the issue with this from the get-go. So, but I'm willing to go with what he's proposing here. I think this will. Mike and I actually had a quick conversation with the applicant a little earlier today about some of the concerns that we had raised at the last public hearing. And he answered those, you know, I'll speak for Mike. If not, you know, he'll smack me in the head and tell me to be quiet, but if I'm wrong. But it seemed that the things that we brought up, you know, were answered to our satisfaction. So we're willing to move forward with this.
And they will need a site plan?
Right.
Yes. For the next?
They'll be bringing a site plan.
Yeah, they'll have, yeah, if this goes, you know, if it's approved tonight, obviously it goes to the county commission. But if it gets to that, if it's approved there, then, and he's well aware that you'll have to submit a site plan showing all these improvements that are in the pattern book and to have them constructed as such.
You know, I do have that concern, though. We were operating without permits there before. And now we're getting down to this point where we are, we do see improvement. And when you do go to the PUD there, you either do it or don't. We're going to have a site plan to help bring this forward to where it needs to go because it's there. And I think we're going to have to do something with that and where it goes. And I think the PUD's all that's going to put it where it's at. Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll give the opportunity and move for the approval. We have a motion to approve, including all the staff comments.
I'll second that. We gonna make a comment?
Yes.
The new school is just around about two curves around there. Is this, we got the road, we got plenty of road dedicated?
Yes, I do believe that this was one of the?
Yes, I believe that this is one of them that he had.
Get some right away.
Like Clyde said, they had to take some of the trees to widen the road right there.
So we got all that taken care of? We got all the road we can get from him, right?
Right.
Okay. Poor performance is what the problem is here. And you got enough teeth in what you're doing tonight for Tanya? Y'all got enough teeth to take care of this?
Given the history of this one, since it's been approved since 2014, 2015, and just the history of it has just showed us that we're going to keep, we're going to keep a close eye on it over the next couple of years to ensure that they abide by the approved site plan or the approved plan or plan.
I'll second that.
I have a motion. I'm sorry. Commissioner Allen.
Yes. I don't know if this question is for staff or it's for Nick, but when you have an applicant who's making application for the PUD and you have a different owner of the property, when it comes to time to hold somebody accountable, is the owner also compelled to make the plan compliant or is it only the applicant?
I'll just wager my, my personal opinion on that, and Tanya and/or Nick can feel free to jump in. But ultimately, whenever we're dealing with zoning enforcement, the, ultimately, it's always the fault of the, I mean, it's the owner's responsibility to make sure that his tenant's doing what they're supposed to be doing. Now, I can let Tanya speak more toward enforcement as far as what they do, but I think we would probably start with the applicant, you know, assuming it's his business. And at some point, he may purchase the property for all we know. So that being the case, we would start with the applicant. But ultimately, if we're not getting anything from there, it moves to the owner. And again, I'll defer to whatever Tanya and/or Nick may say about that.
And actually, as far as zoning enforcement's concerned, we can cite and hold either one accountable or both at the same time. It can either be the property owner and/or the person causing the violation.
Have we brought the owner into this conversation when he had compliance issues in the past?
We have. That's why we're here. We contacted him when we first were aware that Mr. Grabey was using his property.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Allen. Other questions? Nick, did you have anything? Smart man. Anyone, anyone else?
Question, Chairman. This is Michael Kush.
Hey, Mike.
Doug and Mike, looking at some of the photos you took from Friday, it didn't appear to be any silt fence or stormwater quality compliance. Is that, is that part of the, Tanya's, is that part of the complaint? And has Tanya served any violation reports? Has there been any fines paid?
You want me to answer that?
From a stormwater standpoint?
Oh, no. No, sir. No, we have not been involved with, with stormwater investigations of this until it went through the rezoning process. We will make sure everything meets the site plan approval, make sure he has land disturbance permits, and make sure he complies to those and has a state stormwater pollution prevention plan, a SWIP, to go along with his site.
So going forward, he, he's on the clock, but his past, his past violations out there, he's basically getting off scot-free? Is that what you're telling me?
He has come before us because of his past violations. He's, we hope that he will bring his site into compliance with this planned unit development. So I don't know if he got off scot-free because he's had to buy, you know, hire consultants to put this plan together.
Well, but, but he's, if I understand right, he has been in violation up to this point, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
And, and, and he has not paid any fines?
No.
That's correct.
No fines.
For, for that reason, I'm voting against it. If, if a guy's in violation, he, he should be held accountable.
Other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Allen. I'd just like to add to that.
Yes, ma'am.
I had similar thoughts to Commissioner Kush. My, my only concern is, and the reason that I went with the question that I did in terms of enforcement and compliance is because everything that we've talked about, we've said that the zoning of this property seems appropriate. But we put the PUD in place as sort of a contract between the county and the applicant to say each of us is going to do, you know, agree to these terms. And so that was the reason for my question in terms of obligating compliance is that who can we pursue to make sure that it's compliant? And so that was the reason that I, that I wanted to know who's on the hook for this for keeping their word. Is it going to be the applicant? Is it going to be the owner? Is it going to be both? And it sounds like from a county standpoint, we're going to be much more aggressive and assertive in making sure that we get compliance going forward.
Yes, we will.
Yes, that's correct.
Yes.
Thank you for that comment, Commissioner Allen. Anyone else? Once again, we have a motion and a second to approve 18-8005, Scott Grabey, and for Benchmark Companies. Once again, any other comments or questions? Call the roll, please, Gail.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, this is Chip.
Hey, Chip.
I do agree with, I tend to agree with Commissioner Kush on this one. This applicant has given, been given several opportunities, and I appreciate the work from Coz and trying to ultimately try to get this rectified and moving forward. But I tend to lend with Commissioner Kush on this, and I'll be voting against this until we can see from the applicant in the current situation that he's willing to work with us and bring his current site up to our standards. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Don't let me cut you off. Any, any other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
David.
I've got mixed feelings on this also, but I do believe this will help him come into compliance, give him more room to work, and it being a PUD, a little bit more enforceable. I, I'm going to vote yes. I'm going to vote yes.
Very good. Thank you, David. Anyone else?
Chairman Phillips?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Who's that?
This is Scott, this is Scott Grabey. Would you mind if I say one thing?
No, go, go right ahead.
I understand that there's been a history of failing to perform, and that's ultimately why, why we're here. So every time I have brought this up to get it rezoned, there, there's been improvement. And while, while it's been a work in progress, I, I see where some of the commissioners are saying, well, as penalty for previous action, this should be denied. And while I do see where that's coming from, every time this has been brought forward, there has been market improvement in the site, and there is a willingness from me and my company to get this right. I, I don't want this hanging out there any more than zoning or planning or any one of the, or rather for county departments. So we will be in compliance. It's not so much that we have learned our lesson, I just, I don't want this to be a thorn in anybody's side. This is the first site that I've ever developed, so there is, there is a bit of naivety to this. I've certainly got a crash course in, in how to bring a site or what needs to be done and the importance of these steps. So moving forward, I will be in compliance. There is a market improvement in our site. We want to be a good neighbor, we want to be a productive member of society out there. So to speak to the concerns about me essentially thumbing my nose at, at this moving forward, that's not, that has never been the intent, even though the optics might look like that, that's not the intent. And the reason that we went with kind of above and beyond just to meet all the requirements through the PUD should speak to that. We're looking to stay on the straight and narrow, and we will be in compliance.
Thank you, Mr. Grabey, for those comments. Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir. I am the one that voted the motion to approve, and I'm, I'm very stingy with my motions to approve. But in this right here, I did mention within that motion that I said I give the individual the opportunity. And when I say the opportunity, is that as we've said right here, as we work with codes, as we work with planning, we give them that chance to bring this to the standards that we're asking for. And as I mentioned earlier, every time I've seen new pictures, they have been improvement with it. And it looks like to me something like this, you know, it takes probably time to do it, and if we put specifications, if we put time limits to what we've got to do right here, we can see that change coming. But if we don't give them that opportunity, you'll never see the improvement, and we'll continue to be where we are. So if we don't do something to give that opportunity and put this, as we're calling for, the plan unit development, I can just see where, you know, we're spinning our wheels too. So that's why the motion I gave was.
The reason I seconded that motion because I asked, I asked, did this give us enough teeth, teeth to bite into it and take care of the situation? And you said we did. So if this gives us enough teeth, maybe this will cure the problem.
Thank you for those comments. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Nick.
Nick, you're up. Go ahead, Commissioner Allen.
Part of the reason that I'm, I will be voting for this is it's my understanding that prior codes compliance is not grounds to deny requests. Is that accurate?
Sometimes I always say, or sometimes I say it depends, but in this scenario, and generally speaking, I don't think that the commission can penalize an applicant for past code violation issues. That would be done typically through an administrative process with maybe the stormwater department, who we have an ordinance that allows to assess fines and civil violations. But here, the question before this body is whether it's appropriate to rezone this to a PUD, and whether the plan book and the applicant's materials comply with what we're, what is to be submitted. And if the answer in that is yes, then I don't think it's a valid consideration of past code noncompliance.
Are we ever allowed to take credibility into consideration? Because it seems like the past issues would, would tie to credibility.
I think that the answer to that is yes. This body, depending on what sort of application is before it, has to make certain factual determinations and the record that is being presented to it. There is case law over whether this body acts in a legislative capacity, or rather, an administrative capacity when it comes to assessing PUD applications. Don't hold me to this, because I, I can't recall exactly, but I think that the answer is when it comes to PUD, you're fitting the application into a set of required requirements that are in our ordinance, and so it's more of an administrative sort of determination. And so when you're doing that, I do think that you have a factual record before you, and even if it was a legislative decision, I do think that you can weigh the applicant's credibility and weigh it against all the other facts that are before you.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Ready to vote? Once again, we have a, a motion and a second to approve 18-A-005. Call or roll, please, Bill.
Charlotte P.?
Yes.
Chip Pinion?
No.
Greg Lynch?
Yes.
David Jones?
Yes.
Tim Aberwater?
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth?
Yes.
Mike Kush?
No, based on credibility issues.
Pettis Reed?
Yes.
Rhonda Allen?
Yes.
Jeff Phillips?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Brings us to the end of our agenda. Staff reports or other business?
Just a quick announcement, just so everybody's aware, we had our submittal deadline about, I guess that was about a week or so ago, for our, about two weeks ago, for our Plats and Plans. We've probably had one of the biggest Plat and Plan summittals that we've had since I've been here. We've had, we have totally submitted everything, over 20 Plats and Plans come to our office for review. Unfortunately, a majority of those have to be on the Planning Commission agenda, so have a good breakfast before you come on, on the 28th for our, for our next meeting. But hopefully, they'll be in good order, and we'll be able to get through them pretty quickly.
Everybody get the gist of that. Our next meeting is at 9:00 on September 28th, right here in this room, and it should be a lengthy meeting. So those of you who will zoom that meeting, you can cut your picture off and eat your breakfast, those of us that will be in attendance who will probably be able to drink our coffee, but that's about it. So be prepared for a lengthy morning.
And Mike has an announcement as well.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to announce tomorrow night, in this very chamber, will be our annual Stormwater Advisory Committee. Marvin is a member of it, and we will go over our annual TDEC application to stay in compliance with their stormwater permit through the state. So if you're looking for some excitement, come on out tomorrow night. Hopefully, it'll be a quick meeting, but, sorry. But it's just tomorrow night at 6:00, this very room.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Doug.
Sure. Commissioner Allen.
Doug, have we made any progress on the comprehensive plan? I know this year was a year we were hoping to update that.
Yes, ma'am. The, actually, as a matter of fact, I sent some information to our consultant the other day. It's a lot of, a lot of it's kind of startup information. I think the first step that he wants to do is start setting up like calls with the various commissioners and things to get their ideas and to get their thoughts about what they want to see in the plan. That information went out to them last week, so I'd anticipate some, some movement on that. We've been kind of, it's been, with everything going on, obviously, we, obviously, we want to have a, a robust public participation element, and with COVID and everything going on right now, it's just difficult, so we've been kind of walking, kind of doing a holding pattern right now, trying to get some administrative things taken care of first, but, but yes, did get some information out to GNRC just last week on that, so hopefully, that'll be starting up soon.
And then do you know about the major thoroughfare plan? Has there been any progress made on it?
Well, that'll be part of the overall process, so specifically, no, but that, that's part and parcel of what they're working on, that'll lead to that.
And then the last question I had was, I know we had implemented some new software in your office to try to create some efficiencies. I was just curious, have you finished implementing all of that?
We're still going through a lot of that. We have, well, like tonight, as a matter of fact, I'm using the software as we're going through a lot of these rezoning applications to keep track of the various things. They have installed the Planner View software, and we're, we're in the process of testing that right now. They've installed the process for preliminary. It's, a lot of it's just finding time to actually do the tests, and I know they've been starting to work with codes as well to implement the software on their side of things. So it's been a slow process, slower than we'd like, but it's just because of the amount of work, and then when COVID came in, that kind of threw a monkey wrench in everything, but, but we are making, we're making good progress, I think, and, you know, I'm, I'm excited to, especially to kind of show you some of the things that the ONB software can do with the plan review. I figure when we get that up and running, I know you had talked in the past about doing a, kind of like a demonstration for the Planning Commission, that's kind of what we'd like to do is when we get more comfortable with that, is do that. But if you ever want to come by the office and take a look at, and that goes for any of the commissioners, take a look at the, the City Works side of things and how we're using that, we'd be happy to do that as well, because we're making use of that on a daily basis. There've been some meetings here where I literally have this up on, there was a question a couple of meetings back, I remember, about a rezoning application, and while they were talking, I just brought it up, all the information, all the files that I have in here, and was able to answer the question based on what I had in the software. So I'd be more happy to sit down with anybody to kind of show them where we are on that.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Once again, just a reminder, all of the rezoning requests that were considered tonight will be heard before the County Board of Commissioners on October the 15th, 6:30 PM in this room, and our next meeting is on September 28th, 9:00 AM. Thank you for your patience, your participation and your attendance. We are adjourned.